Four, and maybe less, I don't know.
There's a guy, I'm wondering if he can throw, wonders what he needed to do. Did he just tell him to park and then come into our money?
Yeah, or if it would be on service, you probably stop by and check and make sure he's registered too. Okay, and if he isn't with the then they'll register. Yeah, okay, so, okay, thank you.
It was a different than the one that's in the back.
Well, I gave all the guys there for the end. Okay, does that mean Paul can't come up again or not because of temporary jobs?
So your feelings are the good what I did. I'll know skills for protection. Probably not. Not that they could help the others. And why not? And then I can start inside of my. They're all staring at me with anticipation. And she knows what she raises, I'm watching her. They're so sassy. If I do, I thought you want three of us. Built on. They're just fast to get them off. Obviously, we. I remember. They're tired. I'm trying to take a song or a song and they should spot. And he knows. Actually, somebody answered. By twelve and two and three, I'm like, yeah, it's fantastic. We use it as a little chat. It was probably what I thought. It was a state. They have to see. But what he, I'm great, you're a thing, so. Thank you, it's not given. It's no, it's not. Oh, that's what you want. I'm starting. And then you're always here. It's a way to see what you're talking to have. And then we got like a lot of citizens. It's kind of frustrating itself. It's something that's wrong. So it's difficult. In these last five years, to them, you need to. They're trying to avoid it. I saw. They're beginning to have that. And when I look at any of the problems you're carrying. You're the council. Coming home, since I'm sure. Why are they people? You have to have a better start. God is ready to start.
Yeah, three minutes out for meets.
It's one minute out.
We'll call this, Stanley City Council meeting. The order Tuesday, June 11th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. And if we would, no, sir, but please.
I plan to give agents to the way we need to get cities to win. Two to three, I'm going to break patients' hours. One patient, I'm gonna think about it. Any of this sort of, which that raises the rest of the circle.
With that, uh, everybody had a chance to move on to the meeting. And if so, can I get a motion to approve?
Also to approve the minutes.
Okay, there's a motion in the second.
Who said?
George.
George.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign as opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Zoe, and Brad, and Dave.
As career council members, we had our regular meeting last evening. First order of business was an additional use permit for Brandon Myers. Uh, she wasn't present at the 5:30 a.m., so we moved her down on the agenda. So in the meantime, we looked on the rezone application for BNK LLC. This is a piece of property out in the west edge of town that we had recently went from an I-2 to an industrial I-4. For chemical storage, where their chemical storage didn't pan out. They requested to move back to I-2. Um, after some discussion and, and what, uh, what's going on. Motion was made to approve their rezone application without a public hearing because we've just gone through the public hearing process. They didn't go up, come forward, and also to waive the rezon.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the Prime and Zoe Committee.
Yeah, there's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Like?
Any discussion? Without hearing any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign as opposed, motion carries.
Next order of business was a public hearing for conditional use permit for Karen Whitman. At 6:33, Eighth Avenue Southeast. He was wanting to start a small engine repair business. After a lot of discussion, a lot of questions asking of them, how, uh, how much traffic there are, based on noisyness, it's going to be, what kind of items he's going to work on. He said that there wouldn't be a lot of craziness with, with UTVs and more. We inquired about finding a more appropriate shop area now, he said, well, can't find one. So he requested this. So after the discussion, the motion was made approved to grant his conditional use permit for a home-based business.
So I have a question here. So this is small engine repair and we need what?
Uh, lawn mowers, uh, he mentioned construction equipment, small pieces, you know, like with the Honda, Branson, Scott motors. Um, golf carts, motorcycles, snowmobiles, side-by-sides, automobiles. Anything with a smaller engine, no vehicles.
But still, is this all going to be planted in his house?
Yes, he's got a, uh, fence coming to the six-foot highway fence, his whole backyard will be fenced in, and everything will be contained within that fence.
Which, which place? That'll be on the way, the house right on the very end of.
Or right on the very.
On the star next to that way there?
Yeah.
Uh, I guess my fear is it's going to start looking like a junkyard.
That's legit.
And it's a nice area. It has its advantages. It, I mean, fence or not, he's still going to have all kinds of stuff laying around.
But my only concern, and I have the same concern as Lindsay, except my only concern is we've allowed conditional use permits for other things, businesses in the homes. How do we deny one and accept another? Yes, we have set a precedence in certain towns we have. So I don't know the guy, but listening to him speak and, and, uh, he was quite organized. He had a business plan showing everything, how he wants to move out of this garage and either purchase some property and build a building or buy something in the future, you know, so he gets more into the commercial end of property. Um, we did warn the cops, we'll come visit. Yes. Well. Yes, there's too much noise and too much, uh, multi-distance going on.
Considering what Linda said, and I agree a hundred percent, and I mean, can a motion be made that in the event that it does start, anything starts looking online over there, where it starts making the neighborhood look not good, it's shut down.
Can we just do contingencies upon fence and no street parking? That way then it forces it to.
Enough in the front.
Inside the fence area is what I'm saying, I think on the.
How's he get to his backyard from there? I mean, it sounds like, uh, he would have to come up his driveway and go around the west side of this production. Because the, everything on the east side is owned by the city with the walking path. Right, and not accessible, so he'd have to go on the west side of the box. So he was going to put a gate, a gate in to get their own stuff in. Yes.
Um, so he does have an approved, uh, loading permit for his fence. Um, everything has been followed, he's gone through all of the rules and regulations on everything that he's done to his house so far. Um, we've had no issues with him at all. Um, and he is in the audience, if you guys would like to ask him specific questions that Tom is not able to answer, if you guys want to answer directly or ask directly to him, I'm sure that he would be happy to come up and speak with you guys.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think as long as, as long as this is still outside where the way you can see it, I don't think I have an issue with it. I don't know how we could even deny it.
Um, I guess one thing I would like to mention is I actually have this business in Montana for several years. And it was a similar type of situation, and the landowners, they all own the property that I'm renting. And I did have a portable shop on the property, and the entire time, um, you know, I did have some pieces outside of the shop at certain points and whatnot, and the landowners were always very, um, uh, happy with the way it was kept. Um, it was basically right from their, wouldn't be open, not 200 yards into their house, and they never once had an issue with that. You know, it's something that I pride myself on, I bought the house a year and a half ago. Um, we resided at last fall, it was during the city. And so it's something that we both are very conscious of, we enjoy our little home, we enjoy our nice little playground. And so it is a very large priority for us to make sure that we maintain that in that area. And also, um, you know, the neighbors that I've talked to have been very supportive of it. Um, and they have been, they, they look forward to hopefully seeing the business start there. Um, yes, the fancy is coming, um, that you have all that done. Just kind of waiting on this, um, for the last little piece of the puzzle. Um, this is the last piece that I have. It is a registered LLC in Montana, it's been registered with the state, the insurer, the state tax violators, all of that stuff has been. This is really the last step for me to be able to actually open a busy shop here. And I have actually been looking for some other building for about a year now. And the one, um, building that was available that I did build, look at, was over $5,000, or was $5,100, just bought a building. And no external usage of the building other than two parking spots in front of London. And that was just for my vehicle and, that's it. And as a starting out business, um, you know, definitely not that oilfield money type situation. And I have looked, have scoured every place, um, I, I've asked around, and I have literally chased down every avenue that I possibly can. And we do have intentions of a life to within the next several years, purchase this property. We have an eye on one, but unfortunately, starting out, put a building on it, you know, we're still pushing that half million dollar mark, and this is definitely not something I'm going to become millionaire out doing that quick. Um, it is something that we do plan on staying in the community, um, we have two kids in school here. Um, you know, I've got 10 more years, um, before my youngest graduates, and, you know, we do plan on meeting here and making me solid, look like the community. And with a lot of market research we've done, we've also noticed that there's nothing really of this size or this quality anywhere between most and mine, for the most part, and I have a lot of interest uh, other outside areas that would actually bring people through town, you know, more fuel at the fuel stations and all, there'd just be air to pick up and drop off their equipment, and 90% of that would be favored, I think, to this, um, to the shop there, to the house. Um, I don't see a lot of, uh, people bringing in a lot of machines, just in machines and screwing around. It is allowed, there was a busy corner anyway, um, with the truck route right there, and, uh, yeah, there is quite a bit of traffic on that road. That's one thing, you know, we have been trying to keep the vehicles off the street during the winter. Um, yes, so it's something that's very near there, hard to keep it, and we wait and see, we do enjoy it.
Well, I don't want to have a dispiriting situation, you know, start a business in San Antonio.
I don't either, I, I just want to share the, this happened.
Oh, yes, so I have contingencies of equipment parked only inside the fence, not putting in front yard and no street parking, is that, would that be acceptable?
Um, I guess my question was, you want to?
I guess as long as it's not April's name of cultivators.
Oh, no, it's, no, I have no intentions of making it. We enjoy our nice clean house, and we are going to be earning our, in our power, keep it that way.
All the other questions he's asked about, well, I'll come in and talk, I'll give the side by side to some people who is. And, you know, that would be something on my end, I dumped that in the past, and they were warned, and the second time they were to do it, they would be asked to go find services. And if there was anything that was on the legal end of it, where the city or the county would need to come and talk to me, you know, I would be one of them to cooperate. Uh, I do examine my family with law enforcement background also.
How about, uh, the rule with, uh, six-month probationary period? What do you?
Well, that would be, I want to mention, your driving, you know, what you mean.
There is a parking from the street to play garage now that's attached to the house. And if you're going to afford two vehicles plus other equipment in there, but, I mean, it's, I understand your concerns, definitely. It's one of those situations that it might be a piece of, uh, you know, side-by-side or UTV sitting in the driveway waiting for somebody else to come pick it up. Um, that type of situation, I'm not going to have 13 pieces of whatever form part in cars, and that's, you know, um, but the street parking, the question, is that just for the business or is that going to be personal?
Well, you personally, you can, your personal stuff, you can park anywhere you want on the street, you don't dictate that. I think there's an ordinance that says the counts it 30 to more than 72 hours without, I mean, that. If it's licensed, you can have a street. Um, so I had, I've prepared to make a motion to approve the renovation of the findings only with the contingency that the fence is built in. Majority of storages within the fence.
But, okay, there's a motion, is there any further discussion? If not, is there a certain time limit that respects us a few times, here to say, but?
Yeah, that is actually one question that I have, um, because it's well over a month now till you get the contract.
You have an active building permit, you pay the fees for that, so the intention, I'm going to give you the the basis of the little fashion, apparently, or what did I say, you're going to come to put up this on.
Oh, it's definitely, as soon as this meeting is tomorrow, I mean, there's a much bigger work for that, so. Just waiting on this last piece before we dump in 100%, or like 90% already goes.
Yeah, there's a motion in the second, okay?
When do you start work?
Um, with the business?
Yeah, but can we start work with time?
Um, I'm going to keep it basically, like, um, you know, if I do do anything in the evenings, it will be quiet time type situation. We're jamming in the shop, not, not in any kind of machines or points.
Okay. Anything else, any other questions, discussion? Okay, with the motion on the table, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign as opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Be that. Next order of business was a public hearing for a rezone application from Montreal Williams Collector. This is for their current office shop building, which is now a commercial, and they want to take that to an I-2. And 40 acres of property to the south of their existing shop where they want to build their new office, the shop building. Take that and make their culture to I-2. Uh, we did have Tim Johnson came and he was for, he was against it. He was worried about the traffic, the dust, the extra vehicles. After some discussion, they are going to use their same approach that they're using right now, to go into their existing building, they're going to cut a path through the, through the trees if you you all have a little diagram in front of you that's going to show what they're, what they're opposing. And all the trees on the west end are made. So after listening to Tim and some discussion, a motion was made or approved to rezon their property to I-2. All their property, all the time. Avoiding those, since the shop.
I'm taking motion to, and for the meeting.
Second.
Okay, George made a motion, Chad second, any discussion on it? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same signs opposed, motion carries.
After other businesses, when we went back to the conditional use permit for Brandon Myers, she still hasn't appeared. So a motion was made approved to deny her conditional use permit. She wants to just to give it up, go through the process again, I mean, every time.
Your motion, go ahead, accept that recommendation, Zoe.
Second. Yeah, motion in the second is to be all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign as opposed, carries. They, uh, brought back to our commission the mailbox ordinance, which is some council's concerns from last meeting. I did visit with the post, the acting postmaster up here, and, uh, he said that what I talked to him about, you know, the getting a permit for the box written consent from the adjacent landowner of the, to the boulevard where the box be placed. Um, placing the mailboxes within six feet of the driveway in the neighborhood. Also, no removal of anything around the mailboxes is the problem of the responsibility of the owner of the mailbox, not the city. City will not move any snow in front of the mailbox.
Nor could it land in where that's across the street.
That's why we wrote it, owner of the box. Uh, no mailbox that is in place today is grandfathered, they all have to be moved according to the new ordinance. Uh, no signs would be allowed to be put on the mailbox, as an example, no parking signs. Um, the postmaster would have to approve all mailboxes to be put in. Now, with that being said, if there's a reason why the city would deny an application to a person for not, for putting in a mailbox, not allowing them to put it in, if the post office approves their end of placing a postbox, the federal government of the post office would override the city's jurisdiction. But they said they would let it work with the city, if we come up with disagreements, we would, um, they would work with us, they would have enough to individuals, so they come in and ask for the mailboxes, if we, if we do keep the line in about no grandfather, and they have to move them, they would work with us on that. Uh, we agreed with the route of the postal service, that there is a route that they run, that's on one side of the street, you can put the boxes on the other side in the, across the street and not in front of your own driveway. So I have to visit with the postmaster, and, uh, we'll try to discuss. With this now, uh, Amanda's going to work on the, the, uh, typing and the wording and get it a little bit more. Correct, and then she will forward that to Mr. Sam or in his group or review. And ultimately, next meeting, we can have the first reading. And sounds better than the council. Yes. Any other comments on that, from anyone? You can do the, the, I hope, carries, baby. He is supposed to let us know what that is. And, uh, yes, I will, I'll ask him again for that tomorrow, uh, when I visit with him, to get that to us or to Amanda. Uh, the route, because they do have that right now in place, because you can see the mailboxes are in the direction, so.
I was going to say, um, the nation definitely, if they're going to put it across the streets from their house, they need to get permission from that property, because I know a lot of property, nobody has, maybe it's blocked or it's been robbed by.
Yes, as of right now, if the post office doesn't go ahead and put it on that side of the street, they can put it on that side of the street either way. They still need to give permission. And now with this, they're probably, that's in here, actually, that property is the boulevard, which is the city's property. The city is going to.
Is that boulevard technically the city's property, or just the city has easement there?
It's the city property, city right away, 66 feet wide, so 10 feet, yes, but it's ours.
It's the city's property, because I have my pin, and the pins are in the.
Okay, so the boulevard is the city's.
But the boulevard is.
Yes, that's, that's the sidewalk, and she, the boulevard, that's the adjacent. Any other comments or questions? I'm not, it's all Adam.
I was going to say.
Thank you, thanks, Don.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, as you can see, small bit of dual permits. Um, really more armed fences, concrete patio, a couple of new signs. Not a lot going on so far, there's been a lot of rain, a lot of. There's been a lot of rain, a lot of stuff, so. People are waving a little bit, uh, but again. Things to kind of settle down. Uh, hopefully if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anyone with any questions on the. Report from the. Sunny and Zonzi and Andrew. I make much to the room. Okay. Motion on the table, agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Kirk. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most stand sign.
Uh, I'm just wondering, um, the Monco Bethel Home has turned in a building permit for uh, an approximate forty-seven million dollar extension. Um, they would like. To know, um, if that permit fee will be waived. They are technically, the Bethel Home is technically a five oh one secret. Um, but they would like. It from the council before I approve the building permit, we're not near approving it, they're not gonna start until mid-July. Uh, but they would just like some reassurance one way or the other. That will indeed be waived or they will be expected to. Pay that. Perfect.
I would like to see it waived, but they're a vital part of the community.
Normally what we do is they are a nonprofit. They are waived, um, and the building permit did come in under the Bethel Home. Not the hospital. So.
Any further discussion? Motion? Next one, you know, where the. You know. Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. Motion by George here. Second by Jesse, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, I think it's actually same sign of opposed. He got it off very easy tonight and we ended up. I really.
I'll put a third sticker on the actual list. For the horse. Thank you. Your list is long, I'll get my pen ready.
Okay, second reading in the hand of the. William S. Diver. Yes, and William isn't looking straight at you.
So obviously, because this is an annexation and it has to be done as an ordinance, obviously we did the first reading at our May. Fourteenth meeting, so this would be the second reading, um, you'll see I have the draft of the ordinance in front of you. So I guess unless the council has any questions or any corrections, then we would be good to. Proceed with approving the second reading of the annexation for Montreal Williams Electric.
Move to approve the second reading of the annexation for Montreal. Thanks.
Okay.
Who's second?
She, Linda.
Thank you, and then we need to do a real call. Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
I'm.
Linda.
I'm.
George.
Hi.
Chad.
Any hearing no news? Carry it. And Paul, John Ryan Edition.
Um, and thank you, myself and my business partner.
Hit the push button on the mic. Or says push.
Push on, there you go. There, sorry about that. Um, my name is Ashley Collins and this is my business partner Chanel Edwards. And we represent one of the builders out in John Ryan Edition. Um, Brett Russell is one of the owners, he owns about twenty-eight units. In between, um, on Adeline Drive. In between, I think it's like. Two thirty and two oh five, or two thirty-four and two oh five of Adeline. And um, he asked us to come because he doesn't live here right now and he got wanting to get here today. But he asked us to come and see if there is any way to. See what the process is of doing some repairs to the streets. Particularly in front of his units, which seem to be the worst. When you travel, with y'all been out there like people, when you travel through there, you kind of. It's hard to navigate without hitting the problem on one side, here or the other. So, and we've gotten, uh, he asked us to relay that we've gotten several showings, we have one of his units on the market right now, we're getting ready to put a second unit on the market. And we've gotten several showings and one of the first things they tell us is, we like the house, but we worry about the streets. So we're just asking what the process is, if how. How do we go about? If there's a possibility, anything we can do.
Well, to be fair, this has been, kind of been. Porcs and legal battles for. And the way. Five years. Three years somewhere in there. Anymore, and. We're trying to figure out a plan for it, but. Essentially what it was down to is the people that screwed it up won't have to pay for it. So it all falls back to the city. And. We're. We just can't get okay with special and then all back to the property owners again, because. A lot won't pay the specials, the first time we're known and they didn't. Get what they paid for. We've had roles, our engineering firm, they've looked at several different. Methods and ways that we can kind of put this together over the course of. Home. One year to three year. Program. Make it affordable. Guess what we can tell you? In all honesty is that we're working on it, but there is, there is definitely not. Light at the end of the tunnel within a year.
So we think it's gonna be longer than that year process. To, to come to some sort of solution, I mean, I know you guys have been working.
Yeah, essentially.
Been a while.
Essentially, what's gonna end up happening. They're firing them correctly, kind of, it pretty much has to be either. Or completely out and. Basically done. Or in some cases, drawn down and over. It's. It is alright, it's, you can't just. I mean, we can fill it. But. It, in six months' time, it's gonna be.
Like lipstick on paint.
Redacted.
As a temporary thing, we could put some gravel in there.
Yeah, I mean.
Kind of.
And instead of streets. It's a, it's only about years. Your best guess?
Well, um. When we did our last cost estimate. For all the, I'm sure you can discount. For the four. For the fair and four streets, which includes your Adeline Drive, that you're buying the models. They go and, and to work on needs or ones that are, that need to be done. Uh, we were at. Last fall when we did this, we were at just over two million bucks. To go with the free work builds and uh, relation over the past year. But every number probably back to people in four minutes. For the streets that are out here, that's a. It's a big elephant to eat.
I have a quick question. When you drive out there, it's specifically those addresses that we just mentioned, um, here. If that's where, I mean. When we used to go up and you couldn't dodge them, you could kind of zoom that I know. It's gotten to the point where you kind of can't, I mean, they're on every side. And that little corridor right there. Is by far. The worst, and so is there a possibility of maybe just. Doing a section? I don't know if that's not visible or not, if that's your.
Problem with doing a section is. Still getting a lot of the costs and mobilization and stuff, getting in to do it. Um. It's, it's. It's really not worth.
A cheaper one to do it all?
Right, you did. You can do something temporary over the top. You know. Or not, to make.
That would be awesome.
Workable, but. Um. As far as the things are right and the way we want to fix it. That's the way to fix it. Uh. Seeing that happening right there.
The temporary fix is gonna be. Like Russian. concrete door. And gravel.
Not gonna be pretty.
It's not gonna be pretty.
What is we conscious?
It's not gonna be. It's gonna take the holes out of the door.
Which would be helped, that would be, yes, that's stopped, even backing out when we were there to even. Put up a sign in the mailbox, just backing out of the.
It's actually.
It was, it was. And it's actually impeding the sale of.
I, I grow down in two days. It's absolutely awful.
So we want it, we want it to look good, I mean, we obviously have a vested interest. Chanel and I have been selling property in the city of Stanley and they've gotten, and we met lots of friends sitting here tonight. We've been here quite a long time, over ten years. In Stanley, it's, it's our second home out here, and we want it, we want the neighborhood to, to look good and to sell and for the homeowners to have, these are nice families. We're, we're selling them. These are solid families coming out there, we're getting less and less renters. And more and more home buyers. To the community that are vested.
Well, that must mean it'd be a constant concern, you know, for both itself there, that we had to do something temporary because. It's bad.
They were gonna take some awesome. Old, put a label, there's almost possible. So you have gravel, the asphalt, the cement. Uh, but the way to fix it is bring some uh. Crushed asphalt with payload and try to smooth it out.
If, if, if we put like three inches of uh. Over the whole thing, of gravel, over that whole block and a half there, that's really bad.
A big compromise if you got a little time patch.
Yeah. I mean, I think that would be the only way to temporarily fix it where it's gonna be drivable. And, and not have to be out there every day.
We obviously, of course. Would be a heckle.
Well, they do let me talk every once in a while, so.
Stop talking a little, you know, more than we know.
One of the. One of the things to keep in mind. Um. You know, we've got our fifth commercial project where we're looking at that project right now. Uh, Patrick tells me, you know, things have been on the street for a week, we've already got a. Plan holders that have pulled that project down. Looking at it, we're looking at milling there. Yeah, um. We can see, we'll know, you know, we'll know next month what happens with. Prices on a mill coming in here. At that point in time, and maybe. There is the possibility that if we took it. Three inches of millings and we dumped them out there with the payloaders and then we took that mill. Worked out a contract there where we got them to go in there, drop that thing in and blend it. And then blade it in. We would have a. Surface, that would be a surface, it would be. It would be leveled out, it would shed water, it would get the water into the curb lines.
So the nice thing is you wouldn't be over your curb lines for that, then at that point.
Yes, exactly.
You're gonna put gravel out there, you are gonna be affecting your curves and grades, so.
Well, we do have the benefit, of course, I know. Hard to, it's hard to put positive spin on this, but the fact of the matter is, they put the one lift in. And as a result, all that pavement is down two inches. And so if we add three inches. And increase the, eh, increase the crown. We can make that material fit in within the road. And make it fit in there.
That's only, some sections, they only do one with, I don't think I have.
Uh.
I believe it's pretty volatile up to.
Was it all the way, well, I thought when we looked at it the other day, it's down along.
It's not gonna be down, it's actually been a heck line. Well, it's been, I mean, but we're up to that, well, we're up to that church, I think it is now. I've got, so I remember, I, I have to look at it again, but.
Yeah, I think, I think we would be able to make it work by doing that. It's, it's something, you know. We keep coming back and talking about trying to.
Owners out in that area, right, well, they have lived with the street.
Right.
Uh, I really don't, I, I wouldn't want to live with that in front of my house. Um. It's. It wouldn't be wonderful to be there, and then like they said. You are leaving like this.
So with, with what he just said, would it be fair? And what Dave said, it'd be easier to fill the hole works, or overly the hole works, but if we have this option. Let's look at filling the holes. With. Drudge concrete, whatever material we got to give it smooth. And so every project hits up, find out, beans are hills and town, what would they charge us to fulfill that? And if we only can get two blocks. If that's what we can afford, well, we're. At least you got two blocks that are, are better than what we got right now. And it's a start on. Moving forward with, well, it's gonna, it's gonna help us personally moving there. So.
I think that's wonderful, I mean, I think anything that we can do out there to make this. Be livable for these people out there, I think it's awesome.
I think it's actually, you know. Dave's crew is, you know, more than capable, they're good. They can fill any holes and.
Well, rather than have a motion for that. Um, I'd like to see a motion. Or. Rules. Giving us a final plan for. And for doing just that.
Well, and what we would do to keep costs as, as low as possible, we would simply set it up as a. A typical section, we don't have to draw. Plan of profiles for the whole thing, just the curb lines are there, we're gonna match that. We'll draw up a typical section, we'll talk. About what we want to bring in for imported material. And what we want the contractor to be able to do. And that way we can get a per foot price and you guys can go from. Can do two hundred feet grade, we can do two thousand feet grade, we can do the whole works.
Oh, oh, now that's a little then, I mean, that's not gonna happen right away, that's gonna be two, three months down the road, or they'd never even be able to consider it, something like that. Uh, could we get some classified brought out there or something, Dave, and fill us?
Yeah, we'll bring a bit of them out there. On that small blue.
Alright.
You too.
And I don't think that, you know, the end, it's not, it's not a district, it's not. They can just put together that. Recommendation with all motion to. Bring it back to us, but it's not gonna be passed on to the property.
We just do it under our general, general contract, it's not gonna be a large sum at this point. If we get a fantastic bid down here on commercial. And we get a contractor that really wants to do the work. We come back, we revisit it, we put together a plan to do the job on I, and we wipe the whole thing.
Maybe make an offer to them and. The same contractors, this is the.
Yep.
That sounds like the finally.
Which I think it's the best we can do.
That sounds wonderful.
That sounds awesome.
Does, yes. We really appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the water, water purchase agreement.
Evening, um, I'm here for Blackwell Electric, um, getting a. Water purchase agreement, we recently bought the old craft electric shop. About a ton, or not, I don't know, I went through there. Um, I guess I'm not too sure what's. The whole process is going on, I haven't been involved too much. Um. Going forward, um. We have, I think there's, we have two bathrooms in there and then. We will be doing some pressure washing and stuff like that, so not a whole lot of water used to be out of there, but as of right now. We, it's a shared well with us and another shop that's right across the street, or across the park and lot. So we just want to. Um, basically general. Water.
Mayor, may I make a comment? Um, he initially was not the gentleman I was speaking to, which I never caught his name either.
Oh, no, it'd be TV, I'm guessing.
Okay, so, so yes, discussing this, they are, this property is not in city limits. Um. They would like to get, obviously connect to city water, but they, he had informed me they would not need to connect into sewer. Did have a discussion with Dave. Um, figured that they could come. Connect from kind of the northwest of that property, they might have to look into obtaining easements. In order to connect into the water, and since this is not where they're looking to annex in, they would just like to get water like we do. With the ones up north. This would be the same process of just doing the water purchase agreement. And obviously for a commercial, it would be the six thousand tap fee. And everything connected to it would be at their expense, and then obviously there's the seventy-five dollar connect fee, which is. What we required for our equipment, you know, the MXU and meter.
That. Water line.
That line runs from the west and it hits the tree line on the west side of the end of this property there.
That line runs from the west and it hits the tree line on the west side of Wayne Evans' property there and shoots north. So they'd have to get an easement from Wayne Evans to kind of go on a key order to tie in.
Well, I think that would be the first thing is you're going to have to probably get your easements and see it, if you can get an easement there.
Yeah.
Um. Before we make any decision here, I mean, I think you're going to have to have knowledge of whether you're going to be able to do what it is on, so. I didn't think that's where you're at.
Good.
Um, as far as that other water that's, uh, out around the county, I don't think there's a line anywhere near there, is there?
That's the closest one.
That's the closest one that comes to those north there. And then there's, I don't know, there's there're now six or eight pipelines that crossings in there too.
No, that's the closest connection for the
Right, but they have to bring that all the way south, they have to get a, or a pipeline.
I don't know what's in there for additional line.
There's a bunch of pipelines that you're obviously going to have to visit with those people to make sure it's awesome. There's all that, all that gathering comes in, right down those centers, those two blocks.
I'll guarantee you that would be so expensive. Do that, do the way you're out there with the well, but there's some current R and T projects that are going on. That's very interesting.
Where all of our team got there.
Yeah, I thought it was south and east. Um, they end that quite a ways east of it.
You know, that's a place.
Uh, they end up by Jimmy's place. Yeah, what, what, he's pretty good.
I don't remember something like south versus. Actually wasn't. Also, I was wondering, I don't know either.
I tell you, we connected the R and T last fall at the office of the Aspen.
Yeah, I know we go left for south. I'm, I'm going to help you on yours later. Because I know there's, there's some people.
Is that our T line, east side of that way? Or is that ours? Well, that was below the company though. I've never been one like there, it's not just stupid.
Two homes, two little company.
Break up the corner of the town. We like the market shop.
Like, that's everywhere.
Right. I don't know, but once you get up to that old downgrade property or stuff right south of the ham, it's on the south side of that road there. Way east to the west. You're going to have pipelines to deal with that, you can't believe, and.
But they wouldn't have to cross there. They're not south of the ham, they're on the west side of Highway Eight, the northwest corner.
I, I know, so the easiest place, like he said, it is to go to that line up on the weights.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, that line, there are pipelines that run east and west.
There is.
And that's why I'm saying you'd have to check with.
But they're kind of in, in with that, I think, because it splits those two lots. And you can see the tree now.
Cost of this is there.
But it can be expensive, so.
But that, I mean, I don't think that, to be fair though, I don't think that you're going to have a problem with us giving you permission.
I, I don't either.
Yeah, that's not just, we're, 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 get all that free compared and then find out that can do it, you know, I mean, you come back to us, I don't see an issue with allowing you access to the water different than everybody else that we allow access to. So I don't think that do this other footwork and then you're going to come to us and hit a brick wall. Not going to happen.
And that would be the biggest current, if you can get those easements and, and, uh, once you get that, yeah, I think it'd be very easy.
All good. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, we have an addition to our, um, agenda and why love is here.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to apologize. Um, I'd like to address an issue concerning the emergency management, um, issue that I'm having because the art of how to choose law states that there needs to be emergency management information posted uh, for any RV park. Um. And when I spoke to Warren, he's specifically about sheltering during a tornado. Um, he said that there is, uh, no shelter and that I should, he suggested that I address it with the city, so that's a mirror to do tonight, um. So I'm looking for, um, a solution in case of a tornado that people in the RV park would, you know, have directions of nowhere to go and get, uh, safe shelter.
Linda, you, you have an answer?
Well, I guess when I went to LBI always for memorial building was.
So, can you ask the owner? Just to say.
Memorial building, I will break up there.
Okay. So yeah, I guess if anyone's got any questions, then they can give me a call and we'll try to, when you guys kind of get more things figured out, then we can have an and bring it back to you, okay?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of wish he was here, but, um, he just said not, not mine, then we can talk to the city.
Well, I always got this in hand. My, my understanding was always the warrants, bill, events, instead of based on the stones. Bank of Florida, and that was accounting responsibility to open it up. Or the chief of police.
Yeah, I guess here, I'll think, um, a few years back, um, it was, we were having a lot of tornado warnings. And so I called the sheriff's department. Um, and said, you know, I just need to know, where am I going to send these people? Um, of course, I'm a human being, if my door is open, they're welcome to come in, but I'm not certified, and my building is going to withstand a tornado pit. Um, and the state certainly does not want me to do that. Um, they have been directing to me, you should not be. Um, and so I told them that and they came around to deciding that I should send those people to the courthouse at that time, and I just put them in the basement area, um. But when I suggested that, um, in a conversation with Warren, again, he said, that's not a feasible solution of longer. Because I, I think if I understood it correctly, he's saying the way it's set up today, it's not the way, the way it was when I was asking for that support a few years ago. Um. And I just feel caught in the middle, you know?
No, the city's ever been in the emergency management side, but it's always been through.
It's always been called, truly called. That's what they call it, is emergency manager.
There's always a key to the memorial building. I mean, when you had that snowstorm, when that buses got stranded.
Do you have, as chief, do you advocate for that memorial building? Access to it?
To be honest, I don't know. I have a whole bunch of keys that are unlabeled and I have no clue what's what. I got a bag of.
Didn't that hear, Cal?
And I got a sack full of keys. Yes, you're right, it is my job, but I have wonderful training.
I have it too.
Sorry, too soon.
Obviously, Steve, you guys are so on the way for residents, what do you recall on?
It's almost a memorial building and the old bank.
Right, man, that's all I miss from all of this. The old bank and the memorial, all matter of fact, they're back in the sixties or whatever, they were, we listed as the follow up show period.
Yeah, they can't be counted.
So can we, um, um, keep looking, go talk to the auditor?
It's Warren's owners.
I think that would be a wonderful idea.
Because.
You know, new.
I switched my degree from emergency management to public administration for a reason, um, but I would be more than happy to reach out and try to be yourself.
Perfect, thank you. Because, because I've been going to cities never. And recall us, who in any emergency management other than the sirens and not even the sirens came through the emergency management. You step two, one little lumber, one little lumber behind him. Uh, Mrs. Bailey's house, all the roads. It's intact, if they're gone. It's new ones that all the, all the emergency management systems. And I'll be happy to visit with Warren from the fire department side of it. Kind of wants to go along.
I see, I think a year, that's. You know, one or a year.
Ground, we'll be moving nowhere.
Yeah. Really should, he's working up there.
Yeah, we'll check it, we're not going to have a but we're a city.
He liked it.
Thank you.
We used to, I knew that Calder Park, the name, very, very.
Well, we did, we stood outside and stared at the guy.
The only thing you guys did is call it.
So what are you, is that you for a razor?
Lots of stairs, wants to go home. So you just want your turn of one goal.
Sure.
Uh. You all have applications in front of you, I believe, and I do have Joel Dennis here with, uh, the applications for. Uh, just a couple of things, Joel actually has a Stanley address, but he lived out between here and us, other Crowder, um, farm, family farm there, so, uh, Joel works as a marketing manager for the Deglin Corporation out of Canada. And his wife's at home with a couple of young kids at this time, so. Uh, you can see on there, he's developed a product that, uh, everybody probably needs if they aren't using it, uh, it's about every house you go in, they got devices planted everywhere, phones left, uh, iPads, what have you, so. Uh, he's developed that product and, uh, we're trying to get him just a little bit further here to, uh, to get the rest of the way so we can get that product to market. Um. What we've been doing on just about everything that we look at on applications now is including the county. They have, uh, two things that are really good for us to work with, one's an Horizon Grant, which is set up pretty much for new businesses and startups, and then there's the community assistance grants, which are for community projects, basically. The Horizon Grant is pretty simple and straightforward, but it does have a requirement that it needs matching money and it cannot be money that's already invested or a product that's already been started, so. Uh, it needs to, uh, have that extra money to do that, so as part of the application, what we looked at is sending a grant to him for seventy five hundred dollars that would be given, forgiven over five years. Um. And then we also uh, recommending that we extend him a loan for five years for seventy five hundred dollars also. Uh. And not to no interest loan, it could be paid early. Uh, that gives him the money for the match plus some capital, it's a little bit less than what he requested there, but there was one line item on the request which was for advertising. And we saw that whereas a normal business expense would have been a startup cost to get this going for it, so. Uh, if we look at applications to do that, a lot of them have been for you know, business transitions or to bolster a business or a business that's expanding, but you know, we also need to look at anything that's new, a startup, uh, some things that over time go away and, uh, we need to replace them with something else that's, that's viable. Um. The nice thing about this would be the county is bringing an extra ten thousand dollars into this, uh, so it's so I saw the E D C fund and that Horizon Grant fund is set up for that purpose, so.
So which one of these is current application where he's drawn a note or in the?
I was just going to ask.
One seven thousand, seven thousand.
It's, it's seventy five hundred on it. But one's a grant, one's a loan. So the reason the loan was put in there was to see successful, that money will come back into this fund, so.
And the grant is the same if it after two years, the business goes away, it's not correct, it has to be functioning, then that money is going to
appropriated on, appropriated on a revenue basis.
Okay, I just have to make a decision. You can see there is a 7500, 7500.
Case, any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to know what cable mention is.
I can blackboard a little bit.
He's got two minutes.
Two minutes? I'm helping, but. Um, I'm sure you understand that, he's not got a show with two years. It's just an idea.
Who, third, that's all, but we're.
Well, a lot of the retractable cable devices are made for travel. And, um, I don't know if you've used those two way ones, but they're kind of tall teeth. And I work from home, I do a computer work and I've got archives, I've got S P cards, I've got all kinds of cables that go to my computer and I can't keep them neat. So it's basically a device like that that mounts to my desk, that is retractable.
Are you sure my lights don't do you?
You didn't, but I bet you'll buy one. My first customer, babe.
Yeah, it ain't well, I'm going to play it.
Yeah.
That's all, just so quickly. And I'm like, I think I'm hungry, it's.
Sounds good.
Really, really good.
Thanks, guys.
So there's a bulletin on the table and your executive on the table. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can I sign the forms?
Thank you.
Don't call us, buddy.
I'll go back.
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
You got high, wait this one.
Linda.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi. Okay, hearing the names, motion carried again. So.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You bet. This is here.
Okay, so I do believe nobody planned on being here, so you'll see the men sit there in front of you. Um, there was four applications. First one was the Lickertown Village for the Fourth of July Car Show. Their requested amount was three hundred and sixty, committee recommends approval of full amount. Second app was for the Stanley Commercial Club for their Crazy Days Summer Fest, requested amount seventy five hundred. Committee recommends amount recommend approval of full amount, sorry. Third app was for the Civil Center for their two thousand twenty four summer uh, festival, uh, requested amount five thousand, committee recommends approval of full amount. And the fourth and final app was the Stanley Rural Fire Department for their annual rib riot. Um, and the request amount was thirty five hundred of their budget of eighty eight seventy, and the committee recommends approval of the full amount of the thirty five hundred.
Okay, most second thing. Second by Linda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Were you Kirk?
Jesse.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hearing no dubbies, motion carried. What can you say?
Okay, so this was also something that kind of came up at the last minute today that I had to do some checking into and I forgot to give myself a copy or does everybody have the email in front of them?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so since there's been plans of unsure where they were going to have their, the Fourth of July events or even just for the dance. Uh, so they are requesting to close the closure of First Street Southeast between Fifth and Sixth Avenue for July third through the morning of July sixth for the Fourth of July festivities. Um, they are staying, stating that however, if this period is too long, the minimum they would accept would be just the morning of July fifth uh, through the morning of July sixth. uh, through the morning of July sixth.
This is a lot for the pool on the side of the pool, correct?
Correct.
Take a little bit to this reading. We, what they requested in the past or perhaps the president there. Is there's a lot of foot traffic, whether it be a free payment or the board or people walking the town, whatever maybe that is probably one of the busiest, you know, dangerous blocks are all forced to divide. And we keep it closed and do your festivities there. Everybody stays safe.
Thanks. Good idea. I get a motion. So, second. Motion and a second. Station further discussion. If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Same sign opposed.
Not more than day when you want to make sure those. Patrick.
Hello. So going through our list here, projects you got going on for you. For the country states water, we had our title off the new last week with contractor. They're gonna be coming up this week to, uh, fix those issues in the roads we talked about when you looked at it with them. And they're gonna be up here with equipment to get it fixed right for you guys. So what we're asking for today is to, uh, preliminarily accept the pay application to release retained until, uh, once they come this week. They said it should be late this week, so like the Thursday or Friday. So wait to hear from the exact date. But then we can sign the data and release it. But we are hoping this is the preliminary go now. So that way we didn't have to come back in the month then to look at it again and wait on it. This, this should all be finished out this.
What is what they, you know, like? That we don't sign it and that we, that's why I just want to put it on contingency that it all goes well.
I guess. Good idea.
I wouldn't have a model. So if I wouldn't have a model signed tonight, I would have to sign it whenever the work completed and looked at it and got notes done on.
As long as it's continued upon accepting what they do to fix the road, I would be fine with it.
Or we could group pay up for six with.
Okay, the second by George. Alain, you wanna do a little call on this?
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Linda. George. Chad.
Hi.
Hearing no names, motion carried.
So then for that fifth street reconstruction project, we got, uh, we got some meetings set with contractor for River. First, they have the utility coordination meeting set for June seventeenth. And then on that note, I know Chad and I talked about, uh, can I get a plan together so that way we don't have the same situation happen in phase one where later there is an issue that they end up having to cut into the road more for a service. There's a leak there. Now, obviously they can't plan for leaks. But I talked to the representative from M D U and they said they have no plans to work on any of the lines at Stanley for the next ten plus years. He says our lines are good right now. But, uh, if we get to the conceptual phase of future projects such as a phase three, phase four, you send it across to their engineering that they will take a look at it and if anything does pop up or change for them, we'll know and they'll put it into their plans. So they're not cutting into lines. For this particular project, the lines don't go down the street. They don't go across it at the, uh, the streets we're crossing. So we shouldn't have any issues where they're cut into it or any issues on this one.
Okay, lines are good in Stanley. They don't even work out for ten years. I'll come back and.
Yeah, and.
They have a service leak. Can't plant that. They're saying they have good material in their maze and I expect that it's pretty planned for it.
But then, I mean, it should be the one that should be on there to fix it the right way.
And so I decided to get into the details about fix it. I was trying for a plan, but I know Chad, I talked about, I don't have to plan that fixing in the future and how to go about that. We will have a recommended plan for their help.
Right, where they don't control it, but they can pay for it. Um, on the pre-construction meeting that you got set for July sixteen.
June seventeenth. It's coming up here next week.
No, you gotta.
Oh, pre-construction. I'm sorry.
Uh, now in the past, sometimes contractor doesn't want it or doesn't actually show up for their pre-construction is, you know. For whatever reason, I can't imagine that, but they don't.
I think, I think I'm arguing for a reason with them. So before I put in, these are brought them forward to you. I talked with Chris, guy who worked with the Crow River. He's assured me they are gonna be there. It's gonna be at our office at two P M.
Because there's something different about talking to somebody across the table than on the phone.
Hundred percent. And so I already have their assurance that they're gonna be there for all of these meetings that we set, the pre-construction and utility coordination.
Perfect.
Uh, and then their tentative start date is still August eighteenth. I confirmed that with them and it hasn't moved due to the weather or anything like that. They're still looking at the same date. So we're working through writing the documents on that to get all of that. So far it's all moving smoothly and that's got all the updates on that for now. And I'll keep you guys posted. We got meetings. For the commercial repairs, can you kind of talk about? We got July first, bit our, our, uh, middle opening date. It's been advertised for less than a week. Seems like we're getting really good hits on it. A lot of people are putting good eye on it and had, had some good conversation on it. I think we're gonna be sent involved now. Finally, is a, uh, project we got, uh, that I was kind of hoping to get you guys feedback on. One of our, uh, other clients is looking to do a chip seal project. We thought it'd be good to look at all of the areas in the area and see next year if we can get a better price by offering it together. But I talked with Dave about the streets of potentially needing chip sealing. Can we put together a list and I put an estimate in there for you guys? Now, all I'm kind of looking for right now is maybe crossing there for the next month until we have that next meeting. We'll get that and I see which ones stress they can be viable. If you want to participate, then you can try and work on this. That way we get a certain price and kind of fill up some of these roads if, uh, if it would fit for us.
Is the whole cost of the testament or forty-three?
There's a lot of rules on there. It's including Red Far Road, everything we done phase one as well, as well as many streets they will see when there's cracks along that would need it. I had to go through all the ones that he kind of mentioned and I took a chance to count that wasn't weren't chip sealing. And I put them off separate lists to kind of know that if there's ever something that fits the bill to try and fix those, people will think deeper area than just something. But there's blowouts or alligator dragging that are just not gonna hold up chip sealing at all.
Actually, at this time, I, I don't think it makes sense to do any chip sealing other than what's new, new maybe. Personally, you know.
I'll bring that and just kind of turn this down and show what that number is in the next meeting. Then nothing to do for right now. Right now it's all the conceptual phase and trying to figure out what everyone has in the area that we're talking to about six communities. And we had three-ish streets right now. It's, you guys, uh, have something you think that will be for and there's two others who not really committed to provide some streets today, so we don't have to add yet. But we got a lot of people in the area and I think it's gonna get us a lot of rights and doing our only year to figure.
I think we should look at. Is there someone in pages that's given in the last six, five, six years?
All right, I knew I mean recent, the last few years, but, um, some of the owners have a visible chip ceiling line.
And then one other thing to be aware of that, I had my agenda just kind of popped up yesterday was that I was notified that, um, the E B A has made some funds available to our D E Q for light service line replacement projects this year. Um, and that we got our light service line inventory and it improved very quickly. So so far we're the only ones that at least the contact I was talking to know of that has light services identified that has submitted theirs. So there's a stuff, uh, there's a fund of money that is out there places and for one of the few communities are not qualified for it. And so it's something that they've known and they found, because we did have, I believe, seven or eight of the homeowners who required it. It was three hundred some who identified light service lines and they're kind of concentrated to a, to a small area of a few blocks. Does some for consideration that those funds do exist and, uh, we are one of the few communities that are kind of qualified for it.
That's from the curb stop to the house.
Uh, that would be the entire service line that we know of is led. This from curbs up to the house. Uh, some of these were on the Main Street project that was done. And those we know we replace up to the curb stop. So we know those are good. The rest of the way. There's some other ones such as this street going to the east from Main Street. Fifth Avenue, excuse me, that are defined as lead and we haven't done a water project there so long and do that, that's in that main. So those probably led all the way through. You guys have any other questions for me?
I do.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, you're making that. Okay, moving on, we go to the fire, like fourth resolution. Most of the approvals, correct, that they have them tonight. Okay, it's motion in the second. Any discussion?
Who, who's second?
George.
Thank you. Was everybody good with the? Everybody was good with the way I worked it out? That worked?
Okay, the motion in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Same sign opposed, motion carried. Okay, resolution sending auditor bombs.
So this is just a formality that we have to do every year. Um, you'll see I included the century code and obviously the declaration that we receive on the bank blanket bond. And then you'll see the paperwork that I have to do to complete it. And it is, so it's set at two million dollars, which is the maximum you can set it at.
Discussion? Okay, is there a second? Mark made motion. All second. Okay, second by Jesse. Uh.
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Let me just walk down, didn't she? George.
Hi.
Chad.
Right.
Hey, next thing on the agenda, liquor license renewals. You've got that listed in front of you. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, uh, motion to, um. Okay, all.
I do, Mayor, I do have a comment. So there is one that was submitted, uh, was the last one we received. We have not received payment for it. And I guess I don't know if this is discussion I should have with the attorney, but this business also is in default of their E D C loan. So I don't know if, uh, we need to have that discussion with them. I do need to talk to Steve again, but I haven't had a chance to. So. It does, I mean, if you read.
Okay, he's on the group contingent on catching up on there.
I guess that's another, that would be another agenda. I know as far as I'm concerned for tonight, I would make a motion to approve all liquor license renewals that are paid.
So second?
All second.
Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Right, and send it forward. Motion carried. Special events liquor license.
There is one special event liquor license. Uh, this would be for July fifth, which is for the Stanley Commercial Club band in the parker street celebration. Um, and it would be by the Five Spot Bar. And from what Kim presented and just from what she was told, so everything would be on the street there. So you'll see where the band would be located and then she would be to the east of them. And then kind of where she's got kind of the, the brief line there and the circles, from my understanding, those are supposed to be like cones or something in that they plan on having like a fence put up there that's course or would be the beer garden portion.
One more barrier. I was gonna have a trailer. Can't, I don't have as much. Okay, which one, but um, that smaller barrier would be the temporary barrier until then it gets a little later. Because on this, if you like, in time, what's going on, that won't matter. Either they contain a lot of block or they're just containing. Or else. And a new leave. But now it's actually by the force of the law. So we asked that there be, and see if they have to do to the south con and I said, I'm going to the bear building.
Any issues with it?
No, 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 it's fine. That was for us. Like I, or when I spoke to George yesterday, I'm gonna get this home. When I spoke to him yesterday and I dealt with, I'm sorry, I have Lieutenant Jenkins and I looked at the schedule. We're gonna ensure we have enough officer run. We need to handle any problems, uh, that there will be. But just to have the extra style on hand would be nice and then also get a solid community.
Race bans in the nineties.
Motion to approve. Put that aside. Chair.
No, no, I am. Yeah, I wasn't pulling it out. But it worked.
Um, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion carried. Twenty-three audits to be reported. Uh, but there again, you have in front of you, uh, you wanna make a comment on that? Okay, he doesn't wanna make the comment.
Well, speaking for them, the audit report that we got says that everything is in good standing and we're doing a good job. So thanks to the to the all.
And there's a commendation for to the auditor, let's see, that should be noted as well. Also, we'd so the auditor. I agree. Is there a second? George.
I guess the only comment I do have to make is that this. I'm sorry. You'd be glad over there. So this audit did cost us a little more because of our S R F loans, um, because one of them is considered as federal funds. So we did have to do a single federal audit was an additional seven thousand dollars. So I just thought I would make sure everybody was aware of that. And I actually, Jason from Rath and Mayor contacted me today and we submitted that to the Federal Clearing House today. So we are now done for the year and until next year.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. The plan didn't commit.
This is in regards to, to hopefully open during the afternoon hour. Doesn't even want me to. It hasn't happened yet, so I guess I would. And some, well, it's the rest of the beginning. Would like to see this start up. On the.
Mayor, may I make a comment? And I, and I'm not disagreeing with that, I guess I would like to give Natalie a little more time, I mean, she hasn't even been. With us for a month, I mean, she is learning, there's still a lot of things we do have to teach her. And I guess I'm just kind of concerned if like one of us is gone. About leaving her by herself for an hour, you know, might be different if it's, you know, twenty minutes, a half an hour, but.
Make a shorter budget, well, we do, it is kind of. Gonna be maybe only a half hour. One goes to, to the. One. Something's coming.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I was getting at, so I mean, like, could we at least wait till the beginning of July?
Well, I don't think anything that's coming through the door, the. Is it that big an emergency if there's something she can handle, if she couldn't take a don't and get the answer for it?
Well, most generally, just, you know, sometimes you do run into those people that might get irritated if they can't be helped right away, I just. That.
Tell them to stand up, that we are trying to help, we are now open over the lunch hour, so you need to bear with them. Play. And build it, we don't say. I, I mean, I agree with Linda, let's just jump in and. And she'll learn, and if it's something that she can handle, she just play the don't, then I'm not able to help you with that. Please come back and have our work done.
Yes, I would like to make that motion.
All second. Okay, just. Motion and second on the table, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, same side opposed. And we're gonna take that ten minutes, adjourned then.
Oh, are you kidding me? I have retired. I am not. I appreciate it, too. Don't stop. We have a lot of.
Seriously, you do that?
I was thinking ten minutes would be done.
I do.
He told me in the area, I have to swear you can't get anything of motionable, unlike honestly.
No, no, listen to it, Kevin, she means it, no emotion.
What changed the?
Okay, we'll call meeting back in the morning.
Well, I know you're behind fourteen to ten with few results that are in.
Oh, yeah. All right, so this will only take about two and a half hours. So it shouldn't take too long. Uh, you're down to you, you mean before?
Yeah, I have, I have.
Um, so really quick, uh, the first portion of bad news. Uh, one of our officers has heard, uh, is resigned from the department. Their last day will be this, uh, this Thursday, so I'm currently in the process of advertising and trying to hire another new officer for the department. So, uh, we're going to, of course, give preference to those who are licensed or licenseable. But, uh, I'm taking applications from anybody and everybody who wants to submit something. So that's our goal. Number two, um, so there, we've had some critical incidences this last month. We've had pretty much about one week. Um, that had been very significant for the department. And I won't go into depth regarding the calls, but I will tell you that our officers are doing outstanding job. Um, I couldn't be more proud of them. One of the events took place while I was on vacation. So thanks to the mutual aid agreement that was signed, um, Tyoga PD came over to assist in my absence. And we were able to close that case relatively quickly. And the case officer graduated the academy less than a month ago, and she did a fantastic job. If I could find another one just like her, I will take them and ask you guys for twelve more of her. So she's doing, she's doing awesome, and our department is doing great right now. As far as that goes, um, let's talk about calls for service. So in 2023, we took three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two calls for service for the year with two hundred and twenty-five arrests. We're not even halfway through the year yet. Old numbers today, we're already at two thousand three hundred and sixty-two calls for service with a hundred and forty-nine arrests. So if we just continue like we have been for the six months so far, we're gonna blow the numbers out of the water. So we are staying busy and we are having those demonstrated, right? So like I said, I'm very proud of our guys. Um, with that being said, I will be putting in three officers for giving a little motion over here. So, um, that time for my guys. Three of our officers are getting put in for life-saving awards. Okay. I'm gonna put in Officer Wilson for the state that she did in January of 2024. The reason the guy wasn't alive today is because of Officer Wilson. Officer DeSell and Lieutenant Jenkins. Last, last week, yes, last Thursday, went to a medical call, unresponsive, not breathing. Guy was blue with use dead. They brought him back to life, and he's alive today because of that. So when I say I'm proud of my guys, there's a reason I'm proud. So I will be putting them in for these life-saving awards from the North Dakota Police Officer Association. So pretty soon, we will have, um, hopefully at a meeting, a council meeting, them come in and award our officers these awards that are very well deserved. So I think that's all I have for the day.
James, good evening.
Uh,
I had a email from the wires, and that was for the water tower. I believe that was pretty long before I started. And they reached out and said that they need to put in a new state-compliant sixteen-inch fail-safe sealed vent with a twenty-four-inch fan flange. Basically, he explained to me it's gonna be easier access for in and out of that water tower that they asked to put together. So it'd be, uh, another twelve thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars to whatever that number was that you guys had paid upon for them to reboot the water tower. He said they have to have this in there for safety reasons, so they can even begin the work. He said, I don't know what that number was, but you guys have known.
I don't remember the exact number.
Would have been. I would even be in a hard time if I'd not been over this case. Yeah, I was not, I didn't have any part of that, he's had it done when I started, so, you know. Don't look at that. Don't look at that.
Yeah, they missed it.
They missed it, that's another problem. Everybody says, okay, I can do that.
There's another thing, uh, and it was brought to my attention, but there are a few in there contracts for us from the knowledge here, and, uh, there's quite a few things that you had mentioned to me. Uh, with the wire contract, if we then will assign that I, I could decree that in any way, shape, or form, and what it be likely undone. So the, so in that biggest paragraph on call out, this is how Michelle Rivers Company brought travel meal and entertaining expenses into account. The question is, is what does entertaining expenses? I've never heard of any, anyone paid for entertaining expenses in one of the bar.
You know, I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't, I had another one too, so I was looking at the fine period with the Verizon contract. And the city is liable for removing the, the towers, it came for the portable antennas as well. And I didn't, I mean, that's all the stuff I'm catching up on, and that was all signed upon, agreed upon, a lot of the price of the water. So if they ever remove their contract, that could be something that's looked at, you know, from our reliability for all that portable stuff while they pay it.
The other thing too is during high, just after that, during high inflationary periods, it's like increase their top, it's just five or two years during high inflationary periods. Uh, that is pretty broad definition, what does that even mean, high inflationary periods? It's a concern as attorney, who, always that team, you know, just submitted to bill.
It sounds like a checkbook now.
Yeah. So.
You can change the name you want, there's a.
We're not, I mean, we've, we've told them that we're.
Yeah, we don't have to accept.
We don't have to accept any of this, that project, because it would be scrapped and stirred over.
Exactly.
Well, if you wanna do that, I happen to be company that folks would have bulked in. And I said, I turned around, I said, well, they've already agreed upon, so I can go and call me chap, it's already been agreed upon.
I mean, I'm, no way, shape, or form, am I gonna pay for their entertainment?
Well, I'm not even gonna, I'm not, I can't get on to work with just the open-ended cost of travel.
Absolutely not.
What was the other?
They specified, uh, three dollar a day.
There's a per day amount out there that is set that it's supposed to add in the other initial package that they, uh, showed us. This is the only contract that's seen, all, all that we agreed to was the proposal. Or you can pull some less than, yeah.
But that, that's so open-ended that, hey, what other time is an inflationary period if it isn't now? In other words, they raised their price fifteen percent and we've signed a contract agreeing to that.
So would you guys like an explanation from the wire on this, or how do you wanna handle it?
I'd like to, I'd have a ten special meeting, come back and talk with you, it's big, sad, you know.
That wanted to be my. Exactly, they should be.
There was none of this, uh, they're not doing.
All right, uh, we'll handle that. Uh, the second one was the, I have a couple bids for the water sales. Done by the Tony, I got two bids in, uh, you should have them from again. I guess I'd like to go with the lower of the two awarded. It's not a joint, it's absolutely, we put that sales pack into use.
Is there a time, start timing on this?
Soon as you approve it, I'll start some reasonable operators to get it all, so.
But amazing looking move. It's on the bottom of those, isn't it? Second.
Okay, then the other one is we had the building for the.
We gotta hold on this. Any other discussion on that? On the same, but usually our pop. Hard to get to get a lot of stuff done.
Mark might be able.
Any other discussion? All, all, Ellen.
Kurt.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Chad.
Go ahead.
Okay, then the third was the vehicles that we had opened were sealed bids for, we opened them yesterday. The two thousand ten, the high bid was six thousand. And, uh, old Enrich pick up the, yeah, or the twenty-five hundred was, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars. So I could make a motion where we sell them to the highest bidders, we had them open for what we had, uh, they put over a hunt that people could view and look at them. I think we only had probably six bids total, so.
You'll have to accept the bids and transfer title.
Okay. Yeah, made motion. Uh, George second. Jesse, there bid. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Sign for a motion. Very hard, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to attorney updates.
Sir, you want that money to go, it's gonna need somewhere to put that sales money. Do you have like a line item in vehicle or?
It's sort of.
Well, I mean, sometimes it kind of depends on when we purchase a vehicle, where it might be paid from, you know, whether it's being used mainly for water or sewer or combination of both, or.
I think she gets back in the city part.
Well, they both were, they're both public works.
So if you want, we could split it up between all of them, water, sewer, garbage, and street.
Yeah.
Okay, for all of them. Yep. Well, do.
Yes, we can finally, and the airport advertisement was finally agreed, I believe. Finally.
I actually just got the recorded, recorded, uh, title or deed, just actually in today.
That's a follow-up.
Okay, council experience. Kurt.
Uh, I was just wondering on that funds we needed to produce a place that was both the opening June and they opened up for business, yeah. And on what, on?
The old art, it was a art restoration, photos. And all they were putting coolers in last week.
I saw that. They've been busy over there every day.
Anything else? Um, Jesse.
I have nothing.
I have one, because they come up earlier. And couple of specific, all it just the wild, um, with the emergency management, I think a letter should be, uh, drawn up and sent to the, um, commissioners, county commissioners, as well as probably the sheriff's department, if Warren is working for them or under their management. But, um, and, uh, question, and the same question to Twilight. Is why don't they have anything to do with it, why should it be put to the city? Or something like that, when they have always been the ones that they care that.
We adopted their asking mediation, why don't you hear some of it?
Right. So that's even to me, I mean, that's even more um, but I, I do think I do think that a letter should go, um, asking the president why, why they wouldn't handle that.
You need a motion for that?
I would pure like one, Toronto, I will be in that motion. Okay, so probably. Okay, we're gonna make a motion, George second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Same sign and pose. And maybe, I think what we can do is just review the, go ahead.
Ellen would like to know if she needs to drop the letter.
I was just gonna tell her that.
I would, I, I guess I would shut that off.
Okay.
Oh.
Now you agree.
Yeah, I'm going with that, I'm pro-.
I'm so sad. Now Ellen's sad, sorry. You're not open over here. She's causing problems.
I, I.
Well, listen, if nothing else, you give the clarification, so then if we do have to.
Well, I guess I've got something, why wouldn't it be signed in agreement, or signed when they put out, if they're not gonna provide any answer? That's my problem. Now, then, or Ryan, how is this?
No, nothing, there's nothing. Linda.
But I guess this was brought up to me, um, regarding the first in the, uh, I thought the cement pond behind with the tail to the point. It was going to be a motel. But there's, there, yeah, there's basically footings in there, there's trees going out, foundation, but there, it was a bunch of gophers over there. I didn't know that, right, I don't know.
I also took the call, I didn't know who to point it to.
It's not.
I took a call and.
I don't know.
You wanna know how to deal with it.
I'm not.
In favor of poisoning of? Yeah, you do have animals, hoping, supposed to be, I don't know.
I don't know.
I'm taking care of gophers, none of them.
I do. They might be that, cats and dogs. So.
There's a bit of security, but.
No, no, but it's there.
Just over there.
I mean, John, for what happened to that significant? Officer, he's.
God, Brian, eventually.
Yep. It's not taken care of. Probably a bigger. I don't know what your.
Some officer on the property.
Arms. I mean, it's not our property, but. Yeah, so they're saying, you see, I don't know.
I guess we can treat them, treat them like the loose dogs and loose cats. They catch them, they give them, hold them for three days and then destroy them if they aren't home.
It'd become a huge problem if it's.
Because if you go and drive to, it's entering the memorial park, there's gophers over there, go to the cemetery, it's full of gophers, you go to the empty lot, where the commercial code used to be, it's full of gophers. It's not one lot and down, but they're coming, I worked on all of them, they're, they're everywhere, so it's a property owner, you know. Let's say you're on the street and just catch them. Hope see where it's our problem. That's, you know what I mean? Do you figure? No, I'm not, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying.
And then, is, there's something wrong with our segments.
That would be, uh, the emergency management centers.
That county as well. Yeah, well, like the ones at noon and six.
That was what it was, noon and six?
I only heard the one south of town on Sunday. On, uh, on six thousand.
It's all like the one, uh, by our underground water tank, they don't flow that much at six o'clock, because of the, they're, they're essentially. But it's on great, it's, yeah.
Yeah, there's one, I can't remember which ones, and we just synced them all to noon and six, because they were, they were, I mean, it's all. But I don't, I can't remember which ones are.
Martin, can you pay attention to the mood and make sure they're working? Because I, I would hurt, I guess, to.
Well, Sunday, I only heard the one.
And I heard once.
But I did, usually I hear the one, um, along six south. By what is that? Fourth Street? There's also one on, uh.
There was one at the backgrounds. And.
One, John.
One in drop, yeah, right.
All calls.
One at the ball.
I usually hear the one on six down by, what is it, in chicken.
Like a board concert or whatever, you'll taste, it's not still there. But I think it's about now.
I think that's the right.
But, but I know most of it.
Yeah.
I don't think about considering.
To me, I would.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that kind.
We'll just go check on all of them, in case all this rain or something, we start helping.
So, because I'm not the only one that was noticing it, it moved, few other people, who, who, whistled anymore. Yeah. I think, yeah, the only one I heard was solid.
Yeah, oh, maybe the fifty mile an hour wind blow over, I don't know.
Just behind my road. But that's it.
What did you say, no, they were.
Well, I don't know.
Yes, you gotta.
Uh, who was in charge of this lights on the island, the scat lights?
We are setting. Us, state owns them, we have to maintain them.
And that light, when you go on east, uh, you know, turns it, the light comes on, and it stays on. It's ridiculous.
I still think all the lights are screwed up on that two and eight intersection, the timing, there's something not right there.
Eastbound lights are, are on, wait, wait, wait.
I don't know, so I talked to him about that, about they weren't changing. And he said, are you having a lot of people there in that poles that they're bouncing? And he said, well, that ice bouncing, it's about picking up on the vehicle.
But I mean, at the end of, two or three weeks ago, a month ago, I got together, I've got, right, three months ago, and you went and checked it, where, and there's, there's still, there's something not right out there, because you can come from the south to go north across that, you literally sit there for five minutes till that light turns green.
It's supposed to be able to put up all the lights that pretty often, the flashes, I tell you that there are lights. But yeah, it's supposed to be able to do that, and allow me to go through them again. But I bet I've had them all four times since I've started going through these. Just trying to troubleshoot it.
Yeah, there's, there's still something not right. But in pretty honest, we'll be, right, one of the lights, those fire turn through the red light coming back, I got sick of waiting.
That doesn't make you different than anyone else.
It's, it's quite me, yes, man.
But Laurie almost got hit to take her light on, you're gonna get that.
I'm just honest.
The same code, if you're heading towards holiday, sometimes you get me across the moon, so.
You can't, you're in the middle of the intersection, it's already yellow.
Yeah.
And you're still coming.
Well, if you're, I can, I'm headed down, just go through them all, jumping. Hey, running, I'm just. So I went through a couple of different times in my different people, not only working in alley, essentially. Well, I've been working around here, and but this is one of the streets in town, obviously, there's holes in alleys that are causing challenges, people park back there, run the alleys through. Uh, wondering if it's possible just to run a blade down, you know, the alleys in town, especially this one. And I was approached to demolish. You know, like behind the church over here as well, so. If it's possible, do you bring in some gravel or run a blade down, just try to smooth things out. Behind the, the L C church.
So we're gonna start going through the alleys, we've been trimming a lot of trees over in lower streets, we've got all the streets covered, we're gonna go through the alleys, trim up. Because right now, if you bring any equipment down the alley, it's gonna be taking mirrors and everything else off, there's just about room. So once we get the alleys trimmed up, then we can address the potholes.
Like Main Street Alley is paved. Your tears are also very visual related, and it's gonna be, it's in progress. Thought over repairs, more of them.
Again, but.
But not. We like.
Well, those are just these mom.
Who read those?
Has everybody had a chance to make judges report?
Yep. Motion to approve, signed.
Okay. Got a motion, this is taken, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Here's. Bills. We're gonna add some over the monthly bills.
Much overtime, draft stuff is left for the PD. Quite a bit, yeah.
We, um, we have two more, uh, deployments that are coming up, we have a DUI deployment, which will require four, four shifts, and then we have, uh, a, I guess, well.
Good, that's all, all that pretend is, we're wholly covered in traffic. And I, I, I was just wanting to make sure that there's a point that was clear, that the police department wasn't running, uh, giant overtime bill, it's all because of kids, it's not for the most of the grand, so.
Do. I'm gonna take another one. Actually, we do.
Police car.
Um, city police car running twenty-four hours a day. Um, or idling. Yeah, this time of year, is there a need for that?
With the exception of the dog.
So, so they shouldn't be idling for extended period of time, but the equipment inside the vehicle, like our cameras and our radio and our lights, as soon as you turn the car off, all that stuff shuts off. So then it takes a while for it to reboot, and it causes some havoc if, in the event that we need to respond code to something. When my officers are parked out back, they shut their car off, it takes them a minute and a half to two minutes to boot that camera system up. They pull out, they get into a crash, right, you're not gonna ask about a camera, the whole point of those cameras was to alleviate the city's liability and a lot of things, so there are some reasons that we leave vehicle running during summer, winter, or so, because I'm not gonna have my officers to get into a very cold car with our suspects or whatnot. Uh, but we can try to alleviate some of it, I'll just tell them not to come to the office, they can just drive around.
If the car's not stopping, I.
Right. You're right. I was just wondering. As I understand it.
Right.
That it has, they will hear it well. I don't know.
It costs two.
Any dog that we eat that well, we hear it on sun to get warm.
I'm sorry, tell me more. I will. Say that one more time.
Any dog that we eat that well, I. It is our motion to approve bills.
And then the motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Because now I'm in one year again.
Yeah, I have motion to approve all that except.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. I just want to mention one more thing. And that's like. I don't even know, I don't know, I just put, there's. There's so many people right now who are standing. That are really suffering. Um. Probably turn it up, but. Um. They've got, um. A lot of people with cancer around right now and anything you can do to help these people. I hope you do and keep them in your prayers because I think that's important as well. But. I've never seen it where there's so many at one time right now. Hurt and suffering and. Just in. Bad shape. And I think we need to keep these pieces in our, our thoughts, right, because. It's awful. With that said. We also, since we're going to be changing. Uh, council here right sooner than the people come or whatever. We've got. Flag of appreciation for them now. And you want me to present that to her?
Yep.
Um. We do appreciate all the years of service you've given us.
Like.
Commercial service.
From your song.
It is appreciated.
Thank you. Very.
Move the chair out of the way.
Any like you mean. I mean. Thank you so much. That doesn't mean you're rid of me.
Okay, now I'd entertain more just to. Adjourn.
Remove.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those are the areas.